Good evening, I'm calling to order the special meeting for the Euclid School Board. It's Monday, January 23rd, and we are at the Fordice Building. And I ask that you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll, please.
Mrs. DeAngelis.
Here.
Mrs. Lysy.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mrs. Sudar.
Here.
Mrs. Van Hoo.
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you. At this time, we will take public participation relative to the agenda. If there's anyone from the public who'd like to make a comment? Okay, seeing none. We are going to move on to the school improvement presentations. After we're done with that, we're going to take a short break and have some refreshments in honor of School Board Month and new school board member and so forth. And you're welcome to join us. After that, we will continue with the business meeting, business items that come on after that. All right, at this time, then we will move on to the school improvement presentations. Dr. Jones.
Thank you, Mrs. Van Hoo. As you know, and the board knows, we have been making, having presentations from our various schools for their school improvement plans. And this month, we have the pleasure of Upson and Thomas Jefferson Elementary Schools and their presentations for their school improvement plans. We're going to start with Upson. And Mrs. Knight will please stand and introduce anyone who is with you.
Just Ken. Good evening, members of the board, Dr. Jones, Dr. Selico. Before we start our presentation, we want to start with introducing the members of our school leadership team. We have Mrs. Costa, please stand. Mr. Ferlito, my colleague, is up here with me. Dr. Charlotte Ivey, myself. Mr. Sullen is home with his wife, he's sick. Mrs. Urbic, and Ms. Faraday. Okay, those are the members of our SLT.
Thank you for being here.
We have a video presentation for you. We've put together the whole package so that we don't have to stand up here and speak, and so we have it down to the exact time, so that it won't run long. And at the end of it, we have a special presentation on behalf of our students in honoring Board Appreciation Month, so you'll see it go right into there.
Followed by a handout from members of the SLT.
Okay.
We believe that establishing a positive climate here at Upson includes family and community involvement. We began our year with a back-to-school picnic where all of the Upson families were invited to meet our principal and their child's teacher. We followed that up with a grandparents tea. We realize that many of the students' grandparents play an important part in all aspects of our students' lives. In partnership with the Lubrizal Corporation, professionals volunteer their time to read with our students. It is important during our Right to Read Week to have high school students visit all of our classrooms and model reading to our student population. We have organized an educational fair to give parents an opportunity to meet and talk with literacy and math coaches and to provide information about bullying prevention and individualized counseling information. Our annual potluck dinner in February is a culminating event that highlights our celebration of Black History Month. This well-attended event by both Upson staff and Upson families speaks directly to establishing a positive school climate.
Okay, I hope everybody enjoyed their day off. I know I did, I did a lot of resting. But we're going to get started with our morning meeting, because I have a new activity that I want to do with you children today. Go double, double, this, this. Two hits, because double means two. Then you put your fist together and you say, double, double. Then you turn your hands around and you go, that, that. Then you go back together, you go, double, this, double, that.
Double, double.
Double, double, this, that. Okay? Double, double, this, this.
Double, double, this, this.
Double, double, that, that.
Double, double, that, that.
Double, this.
Double, this.
Double, that.
Double, that.
Double, double, this, that.
Double, double, this, that.
We are working hard to provide a warm, friendly, safe learning environment where there is order and discipline, high-quality leadership, collaborative decision-making, and respectful interpersonal relationships between students, staff, and parents, as well as high expectations for learning. The year-to-date comparison by behavior graph below shows an increase in student incidents over the previous year. We've had many challenges with behaviors of some of our students at Upson, which have resulted in having to enforce school rules in an effort to improve the learning environment.
We are in our second year of implementing Reading Street as our core curriculum in language arts. Each day, students participate in whole group, small group, and individualized instruction. They have time to practice reading and writing independently as well. We utilize individualized instruction to meet the needs of all of our students.
Realistic fiction we talked about on the board over there yesterday. It tells about made-up events that could happen in real life. So, this story is about Juno, a boy who finds creative way to write to his grandmother. So, let's take a look. You're going to follow along while Mrs. Costa reads. He looked at the letter that came that day. It was long and white and smudged. He saw the red and blue marks on the edge and knew the letter came from far away. His name and address were neatly printed on the front, so he knew the letter was for him. But best of all, the special stamp on the corner told Juno that the letter was from his grandmother.
AIMS Web data, like you see here, shows that our students continue to grow at a rate comparable to the national average. We also utilize our AIMS Web data to identify and monitor our students who are struggling. Currently, we are servicing over 125 students in Tier 2 and approximately 84 students in Tier 1. We are also fortunate to be able to provide a one-on-one tutoring program for 36 of our kindergarten students. The STEP program partners each child with a volunteer from the community that has been trained and is overseen by the Literacy Cooperative at John Carroll University. During our weekly collaboration, teacher-based teams meet to chart and discuss data from our Common Formative Assessments, or CFAs. We analyze the data, set grade-level SMART goals, and create action plans with specific instructional strategies to meet those goals. Then, after six weeks, we administer a post-assessment. We analyze the results again and repeat the process. As you can see, we are continually striving to increase our growth in reading here at Upson.
All right, it says six cupcakes fit into a box. There are 84 cupcakes. How many boxes will be needed to hold all of the cupcakes? Okay, you can use whatever you want. You can draw pictures, you can use numbers, but I want you to solve the problem. Good question? Okay, go ahead.
Okay, and how many cupcakes do you have? So, how are you doing this? What's one thing you do? How would you, how would you want to solve that? Do you want to draw pictures? Do you want to use numbers? Do you want to see how many groups, six or 84? Which method do you want to use?
Our typical math lessons include whole group instruction, small group instruction, and allows time for independent practice. Each class also strives to practice five minutes of math facts a day and has students monitoring and charting his and her progress to coincide with one of our building-wide SMART goals. We use Common Formative Assessments to provide data analysis on our instruction and allow for reteaching. While our students continue to grow at a rate similar to the national average, we are still striving to increase our rate of growth. This chart contains AIMS Web data that shows our scores are only slightly lower than the national average. We use our time in collaboration to discuss our goals, strengths, and weaknesses. As a result of these discussions, we have implemented lunchtime math clubs, after-school tutoring clubs, along with our first-in-math recognition bulletin board, trophies, and assemblies as interventions and incentives. Building-wide activities feature measurement and estimation activities centered around a specific theme. Here at Upson, it is obvious that each of us is working diligently to close the gap in math.
Here at Upson Elementary, our school administrators complete 10 walkthroughs per week as per the district policy. During these walkthroughs, Mrs. Knight and Mr. Ferlito are focusing to see our students use different tools that promote a higher level of thinking according to Bloom's Taxonomy. Two key parts of Marzano that our administration has asked our staff to focus on include identifying similarities and differences, and setting objectives, and providing feedback. These two strategies are the driving forces behind our SMART goals. Our first goal is that the students of Upson will use a variety of techniques to break a concept into its similar and dissimilar characteristics. By focusing on this strategy, we are able to take our students from a remembering level of thinking to a higher level of thinking by analyzing information. Using this information can deepen the students' understanding and enhance their ability to learn. Our second goal is that the students of Upson will set objectives to provide themselves with a direction for their learning and provide monthly feedback. Their data will be displayed in their classroom and the goals will be evaluated quarterly. Self-evaluation is a higher level of thinking. By letting students chart their own progress and monitor their own data compared to the goals that have been set, students have become intrinsically motivated.
My name is Daniel, and I think the Board of Education is the boss of the principals and the staff, and that they help you get enrolled in school and give you the needs.
My name is Kayla, and I think what the board is, is to help the children in the school get what they need to make them smarter and better for the future, and to get the supplies and food that we need to eat every day, every day.
A group of men and women that come in to make sure that the school is right and that they, and that it could be a good start for a new life.
What's your first name?
Sorry, I'm...
And what do you think the job of the Euclid Board of Education is?
The leaders of the Euclid City Schools.
Your first name?
Jessie.
And what do you think the Board of Education does?
They make the writing and decisions and send out the report cards for the city schools.
My name is Taylor.
My name is Jennifer.
What do you think the job of a school board or Board of Education is?
They make conferences and meetings about our grades.
Uh, they, they are building the school because the school is getting old.
Looks like Mrs. Knight's shoes.
I know. I don't count, thank you.
So, Board, do you have any questions of Mrs. Knight and the staff or comments?
That was a very thorough presentation. It was kind of nice to see the children. And when you're implementing all of these things, that's what's the most important part of it, so that was very nice, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
The "what does the school board do?" is very funny. And maybe we actually want to put that up. You know, on the, on the channel, and just see. Because, yeah, I think that's hysterical. But, um, do you, uh, are your, in terms of the, the learning climate, I don't know if I should be, who I should be talking to, but in terms of the learning climate, are you, where are your kind of suspensions and that kind of thing?
They're much higher. And part of the problem is that we have some challenges there. We're not proud of it, but in order to make sure that we have a positive school environment and everybody's learning, we cannot allow disruptions to interfere with that, so I'm pretty, pretty strong on making sure that everybody's learning, so that may mean that suspensions are up. But I think once students understand that there are expectations for learning and their behaviors, I think everything comes together.
Yeah, I mean, I thought that's what the presentation communicated, but I just wanted to be sure.
How about your, how about the achievement levels? Are they where you were expecting them to be at this point?
Looking at, speaking directly to the... Speaking to the reading, some of the challenges that we're facing right now are a lot of trans latency, and so a lot of the scores maybe aren't exactly where we wanted them to be. We've lost some higher, some of the higher children in place, maybe kids that maybe are a little bit lower, and figuring out how are we going to deal with that trans latency issue. Like, we already have, we're servicing 125 kids right now in our Tier 2. This year, we put in place Tier 1 that's actually getting monitored, so we're adding that additional 84 kids that we're really, as a district, monitoring more closely and trying to set strategic goals for those kids to ensure that they'll be growing as well.
Cindy, we did, from the fall, our reading scores in third grade did drop off to 14%.
Okay, that's good.
From last year.
And the, oh, the fall achievement test.
That was significant. How, how did the CRAWL scores come out for the kindergarteners this year? Do you remember? I know this is pretty...
I remember off the top of my head, but I know, speaking to the STEP program, they, they tested all of their children independently, and they were very impressed with the scores for the children. And looking at the growth right now in kindergarten, they are definitely doing very well compared to 2 in the past, so it's exciting. Just the program, the STEP program is, there are nine tutors that come in, and Mrs. Van Hoo is one of our tutors that comes in to tutor the children, and it's very impressive, so it's exciting, and it just started.
January, beginning of January. And on math, is there a strategy that you're using that is particularly successful? Because it's hard to tell from the, what we, you know, the presentation was great, but we couldn't really tell what numbers were.
We're just really proud that we do a combination of things. We do, we're following what the district has set forth in some of the training in the fall, so we are going through step-by-step and using the facts and giving the, last year, we did the tests and we did a Monday fact test. Now, we're following what the district has given us, but what we're doing is trying to implement the first-in-math, so we're trying to get the children on the computers, as you saw that in the video, and we're trying to do the basic math facts. But one of the things that I can speak of that we're most proud of is that we had a number of teachers this summer participate in some of the classes through John Carroll and have been trained with the Core Standards. And if you look in your handout, in, under the math growth rate, if you look under second grade, the national average is .8, and you look at Upson General Ed, it's .7. You see, it's such a small delination, .1, .10, 10 points. It's, I accredit that to our teachers being trained and sharing those practices and through our collaboration. We have a wonderful math coach in Sherri Daniels, and we have wonderful collaboration discussions, and just like Cindy with reading, we take that and we work with each other, and we hope to see more and more of our teachers go that way. And so, by working together in our teacher-based teams, I think that's going to really strengthen that. We have two teachers, I'm, I'm one of them, that are going to be working on the Core Based Curriculum, and I think that's how we're going to strengthen some of this in the future.
It's fun to go into the room that you do the collaborating in, because I haven't peeked at any of the stuff that's in binders, but you do have, you know, the sayings up above the board, and, and I can see that the room is used, it's very organized and so forth, and we try to make sure it goes back the way it was when we found it, so...
Thank you.
When we get done. But thank you very much. Are there any other questions or comments for Upson?
Just one quick question. Under climate, family programs, I see you have a bully box. Could you explain what that is?
One of the problems that we have is that we do have a lot of bullying going on, so we try to address that by having a box in the hallway that's an office. Students will write a note, and the note goes in the bully box. We check it daily. We always tell the students that the first person that they need to talk to is the classroom teacher. Sometimes that doesn't make it there, so if the note is in the bully box and take it out, we start with the classroom teacher, and usually the classroom teacher addresses the problem first. If it's an ongoing problem and it comes to me, then Ken and I will address it.
I thought that's what it was. I didn't think it was a box with air holes that you throw bully hits.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Dr. Jones, back to you.
Thank you very much, Upson staff, and I appreciate the presentation this evening. Well done. Okay, we're following Upsons by Ms. Criz and Thomas Jefferson, and Ms. Criz, hopefully will introduce who's with you here tonight and go on with your presentation. Thank you.
Well, good evening, school board members, Dr. Jones, Dr. Selico, Mr. Vasek. Thank you for the opportunity this evening to present our school improvement plan. We're very excited to share the different things that we are doing at Thomas Jefferson Magnet School this year. Before we start the presentation, I would like to introduce the school leadership team. All of us are here this evening. Mrs. Stephanie Boka, she's our intervention specialist. Mrs. Nina Zuzik, she's our reading coach. Ms. Soller, she's our school psychologist. We have Mrs. Rich, who is one of our fifth-grade teachers, and Mrs. Carrie Fortcamp, who's one of our second-grade teachers. We'd like to start the presentation this evening by going over our two building goals. And our first goal is to, by the end of this school year, the staff at Thomas Jefferson will increase the use of the High Yield Instructional Strategy: Identifying Similarities and Differences, to 50%. And if you can see by looking at our data, this is the walkthrough data, we started off, our baseline was 0% when we started the school year. If you take a look at numbers nine through 12, those are all ISD, which are identifying similarities and differences, and if you add those percentages up, it's 11%. So, we've gone this year so far from starting at 0% to 11% after doing walkthroughs with the data showing identifying similarities and differences. Our second goal, goal number two, is again, by the end of this school year, the staff at Thomas Jefferson Magnet School will increase the use of the Applied category of Bloom's Taxonomy by 50%. So, again, looking at the walkthrough data thus far, currently, we started off, our baseline was 11%, and currently, if you look at number three, the applied, we are at 36%. So, 36% of the time when we do walkthrough, we're seeing the application category. We would like to go ahead and start with the reading portion or the English Language Arts. Mrs. Zuzik will go over that for us.
Our students at Thomas Jefferson are making great strides in the area of English Language Arts. And I'm excited to share news of our progress with you tonight. As you can see, our reading OAA data from over the last three years, we have shown an increase from 2010 to 2011 with significant gains in fifth grade, and we are confident that our scores are going to increase again in 2012. I'd like to share with you the strategies that we've implemented that are helping us to increase student achievement. First, we are using formative assessments to drive our instruction. I'd like to illustrate how we're using the five-step process by using the example of our kindergarten classrooms. Kindergarten teachers administered formative assessments, the CRAWL, in August, and when analyzing those results, 43% of our kindergarten students knew their letter sounds. And teachers, in collaboration, set a SMART goal and developed an action plan to meet that SMART goal. And when we administered a post-assessment data, we gave the formative assessment again in October, and at that point, 72% of our students knew their letter sounds. We have just gone through another cycle, and our current data is showing that 93% of our kindergarten students know their letter sounds. So, we're very excited about that, and the kindergarten teachers will continue to target the needs for those students who did not yet meet those goals, but as a whole group, we've decided to move on to another area. Another way in which we are using data is through our weekly Reading Street targeted test questions. Every week at collaboration, teachers bring data on how their students did on the weekly test, and we discuss targeted test questions. And teachers share instructional strategies in order to increase achievement. I have the opportunity to sit in on all the grade-level collaborations, and it was obvious to me this year how much higher the percentages are that teachers share out. So, I dug out my notebook from last year, just curious to see, picked out a unit to week four, and figured out the average for that week last year, and 50% of our students had mastered the weekly test targets. Well, this year, on the very same week, 77% of our students mastered the test targets, so clearly, we're getting better in that area. Now, for those students that need additional support beyond the Core Instruction, we have in place interventions. We have identified through AIMS Web children who qualified for the Tier 2 interventions, and they are seen by teachers outside of the regular classroom. And then, students who still need additional support but didn't qualify for a Tier 2 intervention are seen by the classroom teacher five days a week. They receive an additional guided reading lesson in addition to the Core. Now, for all of the students receiving interventions, they are monitored weekly, their progress, and Ms. Soller is going to share with you some of that data. This is an example of what Ms. Zuzik was talking about, a Tier 1 struggler. This is a second-grade student who is in the regular classroom, receiving additional support from the classroom teacher. As you can see, the baseline, oops, the teacher did a developmental reading assessment back in October, determined the child was at a level 18, which is at about, approximately the end of first grade. Then, in working with the student in small group on a daily basis, also progress monitored Then, in working with the student in small group on a daily basis, also progress monitored the student's success using fresh reads, looking at both their accuracy as well as their words read correct per minute. And you can see that there was an increase each time she was assessed. Looking at follow-up testing data, on December 16th, students' DRA level had increased to a level 20, which is now the beginning of second grade. This is an example of a student receiving the Tier One, or Tier Two services, working with a reading tutor several days a week. It's a first-grade student who we're targeting letter sound fluency. This is an AIMS Web graph, and what it represents is this black line ending in a star is the goal line. And in order to set a goal for our students, we set a rate of, double the rate of improvement because these are students who are behind. So in order for them to catch up, they have to improve at a quicker rate than an average student. So you can see the black line is the target for the end of the school year. The broken red line is a trend line summarizing the points taken so far of the students' scores. And you can see, this is a student who is on track to be above the target by the end of the school year. The green dots represent the error rate, and obviously, you want that to be decreasing. This is an example of a student at Tier Three, which in this case is special education. The intervention specialist is also monitoring the student's progress and also set a goal, again, at double the rate of improvement to focus on closing that gap. The intervention the student is receiving is My Sidewalks, which is a portion of Reading Street. And again, you can see the student is on track for being above target based on their current performance. Ms. Zuzik is going to give you some of the other strategies we're using for writing. Okay, third strategy that we have implemented is incorporating more writing into the classroom instruction. Every week, students respond to their main selection in writing. Teachers are using graphic organizers to teach children how to structure their thoughts and also to support their thinking with evidence from the text. And then students use those graphic organizers on the test to respond to the writing. Also, all students have taken a piece of writing, actually, two pieces now, through the entire reading process, from brainstorming through to publishing. And we've brought some examples. Every classroom teacher has a bulletin board outside their room displaying the published works, and we're very proud. And if you have the opportunity, if you're in any of our buildings, because it's district-wide, to read some of the published pieces. Here's another example. And finally, professional development is crucial in promoting change, and we use our professional development in, day in the fall, to focus on the instructional strategy of identifying similarities and differences, Marzano's, and also using the applied portion of Bloom's Taxonomy. And after that in-service day, teachers brought, I brought some examples of how we are using graphic organizers in the upper right-hand corner as an example of how a second-grade teacher had students compare and contrast two stories from Reading Street using a Venn diagram, and how students can then use that Venn diagram to discuss the stories and to exercise higher levels of thinking. And in the lower-left-hand corner, we have an example of fifth-grade students using the applied category by constructing a matrix of story elements across various reading selections from Reading Street. Okay, at this time, Mrs. Rich is going to share, update our progress in math.
Okay, good evening. We're going to start out with our OAA data. This was our math data from the past three years, and we are excited about this as well because we did have growth in all three grade levels from last year's OAA, from the 2010 OAA, especially in fifth grade. That's a year that we really, you know, need to boost those scores, and the fifth-grade scores, we're really proud of that. All right, moving on to some math strategies. Professional development, like Nina said, it's very important to get that professional development and then embed it into our everyday teaching that we do. So some of the professional development that our teachers have had are Common Core, talking about the Common Core and how important number sense is to that Common Core. Along with that, we've administered number talks, and I know that you previously have done a number talk with Erin. Strategy-based instruction with facts. So not only do the students need to memorize the facts, which we know that they have to, but also understanding strategies, what the facts mean, how can I get or, you know, explain what those facts mean. So, you know, the strategy part of it, understanding the number senses is more important than the memorization. And then also questioning strategies is something that's really important to our teachers this year. And here is a poster with some different questions on there. The teachers have this posted in their classrooms, just as a reminder of questions to use during math and in other subjects as well. And the questions that are on here are directed more for the students to explain their thinking, not to direct them to an answer or to, you know, guide them along and give them, you know, answers, but to have them explain their thinking. And some examples are, you know, did someone solve it in a different way? I know in my classroom, we talk about all the different strategies that the different students use to come to the same answer to a problem. Other ways, that you can show me that, can you convince me? So proving what they've done, showing evidence of what they've done, can you see a pattern? So these are some questions that are important in having the students understand their work. One thing, too, that we've talked about as a team of teachers is asking the students how they got to a certain answer, not always say, no, that's wrong. You know, we're just looking at their work. If we ask the student, we can figure out how they got to that answer and maybe kind of fix some of those misconceptions that they have. The strategies that we have on this page are continued. Now, with the instruction, we embedded this PD that we have had throughout the entire year into our everyday math program. So we're using our program in addition to the professional development that we've had. The reteach days on the pacing guide help us reach those students that might need an intervention or to even continue on with the learning that we're doing. And then first in math is also a program that we're using to help our students grow in math. We're also doing interventions in math. Now, besides, you know, the teachers do small groups, and besides for that, we have our math coach also helping us with some interventions. But there is a program that's going to be starting in February, and this here is an AIMS Web pyramid. It's a third-grade class, and the intervention that's starting in February is based off this data. They're taking the students that are in yellow. Oops. Oops, this. So the data that we just got from this current testing, this group right here that is in yellow, those are the students that are going to be involved with this intervention. It's going to go for three months. They're going to meet two times a week during the recess time, and teachers are going to work with them and target skills to help move them out of the yellow and hopefully bump them into the green. This is a breakdown of the students in the class, and then in this particular class, there's four students in yellow, which with the percentile ranking, it's between the 24th percentile and the 44th percentile. So for this class, there are four students that will be participating. Overall, I believe there's about 20 students. These are two examples of some work that our students have done. The top right is an example of students sorting triangles into similar, looking at similarities and differences. They sorted right triangles, not right triangles, isosceles, scaling. So they had to look at the triangles, look at their similarities and differences, and sort them into categories. And then the bottom left is an example of students who learned about equivalent fractions, and they had to construct a model showing equivalent fractions. So that would be the applied portion of Bloom's Taxonomy. All right, so next, I'm going to have Mrs. Boka talk to you about our climates.
Thank you. This year, Thomas Jefferson's climate goal is to decrease suspensions by 10 percent compared to last year. So this year, currently, we are at seven suspensions. And then you can see the data from the last three years. This next graph shows that to meet our goal of decreasing the suspensions by 10 percent, we have to go from 34 suspensions from last year, take that down 10 percent, so we need to be at 30 or less, and we're confident that we can do that with the strategies we have in place at Thomas Jefferson. So Mrs. Fortcamp's going to talk to you a little bit about some of the strategies, and then I'll talk some more.
Okay, our climate strategies include the following positive behavior supports. The first one is Euclid Way, which is consistently used throughout our building, including the voice levels and the five-ready attention-getting signal. The next one is the responsive classroom CARES, which is heavily taught in the beginning of the year and reinforced throughout the year. The acronym CARES stands for Cooperation, Assertion, Responsibility, Empathy, and Self-Control.
And the Winning Wizards shall explain.
This is the second year of our Winning Wizards Positive Behavioral Support Program. And I'll just flip back. We implemented this program last school year, and you can see significantly how many suspensions had dropped by the end of the year, and I think it had a lot to do with that program being put into place. And that program, we, as a staff, two years ago, came together and agreed on common areas in the school, and we came up with common expectations and procedures for those areas at certain times of the school day. Those were taken seriously with the staff because they were built with the staff. So the staff taught them through modeling, through role-playing, through practicing, giving students feedback. We also, the SLT, two years ago, made a DVD with our own TJ students showing, demonstrating the expectations, and also narrating the DVD. So that's another tool we use, and time to time, if we need to revisit some of the common areas and the expectations, we use that. There's also posters posted throughout the school, and they have visuals to remind children constantly of the expectations. Sometimes children will get positive feedback, sometimes, you know, we'll reinforce some things and correct some things, and often, children will get a Winning Wizard ticket. And with that ticket, they have, they can put it in a drawing box to get a weekly prize, a monthly prize, or an annual prize. So that keeps them pretty motivated and on their toes to earn those. So these are some of the strategies that we're using to accomplish our climate goal. So we're pretty confident that that'll happen. And I'll turn it over to Mrs. Criss to conclude our presentation.
Thank you. Well, as you can see, the staff and students are working very diligently to increase achievement. We think we are doing an amazing job, and we believe we have one word to sum that up, not only what we're doing in our school, but our students relaying a message to you, what they think about you as the school board. If you watch with us. Thank you very much.
Any board member have any questions? I think you're getting off. You did a great job presenting the information in a different way, so it's nice to see the differences, and appreciate that. Anyone has any questions? Getting off easy tonight.
We like it, we'll take it.
Thanks, Ms. Criss.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time this evening.
At this time, we're going to take a, knowing us, it'll be a 10-minute break for refreshments, and then we'll resume the meeting to do the business portion. Thank you. Okay, we'll resume meeting. And turn this over to Dr. Jones.
Thank you, Mrs. Van Ho. Item number six is a resolution considering certified staff for 2011-12, and I recommend approval.
Motion? Move by Mrs. Sudar, second.
Second.
By Mr. Smith. Any questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Sudar.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Ho.
Yes.
Mrs. DeAngelis.
Yes.
Mrs. Lize.
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. Item number seven is a resolution considering classified staff for 2011 and 12, and I recommend approval.
Is there a motion? Move by Mrs. Sudar.
Second.
Second by Mr. Smith. Any questions or comments? Thank you. Call the roll.
Mrs. Sudar.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Ho.
Yes.
Mrs. DeAngelis.
Yes.
Mrs. Lize.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. Item number eight is a resolution considering Northeast ABLE Resource Center staff for 2011-12, and I recommend approval.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Move by Mrs. Sudar, second.
Second.
By Mr. Smith. Any questions or comments?
Just as a reminder to the board that this is grant funding from federal grant through the ABLE program.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Van Ho.
Yes.
Mrs. DeAngelis.
Yes.
Mrs. Lize.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Sudar.
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. Item number nine is a resolution considering grant payments, and I recommend approval.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Move by Mrs. Sudar, second.
Second.
By Mrs. DeAngelis. Any questions or comments?
What kind of things will this money support, Dr. Jones? Do you know what kind of programs?
This is part of the, well, the TRIC additional support, it's going to be with ABLE, it's with the Adult Basic Literacy Education Program.
Any other questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Lize.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Sudar.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Ho.
Yes.
Mrs. DeAngelis.
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. Item number 10 is a resolution considering a grant application, and I recommend approval.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Move by Mrs. Sudar, second.
Second.
By Mrs. Lize. Okay.
Yes, this is a, an application for a grant to the United Black Fund of Greater Cleveland in the amount of $10,000 submitted by Robin Hopkins at Uklit High School. If approved, the funds will be used to support the stand-up project for the students at the high school.
Does she have any ideas of, I mean, I'm sure she must have, in her grant proposal, must have had some ideas of how she wanted to spend the money?
Yes, I was prepared for you to ask that question, actually, today. And basically, the types of things that she will be doing will be to provide violence prevention activities for students in grades K through 12, to help youth identify personal and social challenges which may present barriers to academic success, to teach social skills and leadership skills to youth, to provide enrichment activities outside of the classroom, to motivate and empower students to improve the academic culture of the school setting through positive peer relationships and high expectations, to increase parental involvement in the schools, to reduce incidents involving bullying and aggression, and to increase the community involvement in the schools from key stakeholders during rallies, marches, and monthly activities. Those are the goals. The timeline of events, this is for the, from June 2012 to May 2013. In May 2012, if the grant is approved, there'll be a student informational meeting to recruit peer leaders for the stand-up program. The trainings will happen during the summer, June and July. August 2012, Stand Up Back to School Community Rally. September, administer a youth risk behavior survey to all students in sixth through 12th grades. In September through May, monthly stand-up classroom activities at Uklit High School. September 12 through May 2013, gather evaluation data for all programs, activities, and rallies. Number, November 2012, peer outreach ambassadors will provide stand-up assemblies at all four elementary schools, which will be nice. January 2013 will be the fourth annual stand-up rally at Uklit High School. January 13 through June 13, apply for additional funding and community support for ongoing stand-up activities. February 2013, provide peer outreach ambassadors for stand-up assemblies at both middle schools. April 2013, stand-up community bonfire. May 2013, stand-up community focus groups and disseminated by reports. So it's really a rigorous application for $10,000, but I know they're up to the task, and it's been a great program to date, the stand-up program. It's in its second year, and, third year, that's right, third year. The first year was really conceptual, and then a lot of activities after the first rally. So I really appreciate the efforts of Ms. Hopkins and the high school staff in this matter, so.
Dr. Jones, is this grant, was this, did we ever apply to this particular grant in the past, or have we been funded through other grants?
I don't believe we've been funded by this grant before. Just a new grant.
If she doesn't get it, I hope we can pursue other avenues because certainly, the program, as she's laid it out, is wonderful, and I commend her for all that work with whoever else she was working with, because I'm sure there's more than just one person. But I would like to really see that we can get this funded somehow.
Right. I think, I think, well, I don't know what the chances are, but I think it's a, it's a very thorough grant proposal, and I have high expectations for being awarded this grant.
Any other questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Sudar.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Ho.
Yes.
Mrs. DeAngelis.
Yes.
Mrs. Lize.
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. Item number 11 is a resolution considering approving an amendment to the Special Education Transportation Agreement, and I recommend approval.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Move by Mrs. Sudar, second.
Second.
By Mrs. DeAngelis. By Mrs. DeAngelis.
This amendment transpired because of the changes in our transportation services for the rest of the district. It provided us an opportunity to use some of our own drivers to do some of the transportation of special-needs students. And so, we had to cut back on the transportation with the special-needs students. And this reflects that. And it's really a cleanup of a contract that was in prior, prior written was, I think, a little bit ambiguous in some respects, but more casual, and it's a little bit more formalized now.